Okay, here we go. Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, December tenth, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, good evening, President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Baumright? And you were muted, but I saw that you said yes, here.
You're here, sorry.
Thank you. Director Leon is absent this evening.
Please excuse us.
Excuse me. Thank you. Director Keating?
Here.
Director Stroger?
Here.
And we have a quorum, and I also wanted to call our student representatives. Is Indigo Hill present?
Yes.
Hi, welcome, Nathan Essman?
I'm here.
Hello, welcome, Caitlin Yi?
Here.
Welcome Caitlin, and Jasmine Peterson?
Here.
Wonderful, welcome Jasmine, we have all four, meaning our representatives and our ultimates here tonight.
Thank you. Item number four is the adoption of the agenda, and I just want to note for the public, this is our first regular board meeting, since we have adopted a new practice of doing a tribal land acknowledgement at the start of our meeting, so, moving forward, this land acknowledgement will be at the top of our agendas, and it represents just a first step in our process of the district in trying to build stronger partnerships with our tribal community, and really trying to honor and celebrate the culture and the legacy of that community that's still here. So tonight I'll read this acknowledgement, but in future meetings we'll likely just have it posted, and we will keep having conversations internally about what this means, how we can continue to own it as individuals who's starting the meeting and facilitating and responsible for communicating it. But again, this is our first step in this direction. So Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners, the Puyallup Tribe of Indians, and we give thanks for their allowing us passage to their lands who have inhabited this region since time immemorial. We will make intentional efforts to create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I so move.
There is.
A second.
Been moved and seconded, and I want to recommend an amendment to the agenda before adoption. We were not going to take action on item twelve point one tonight, so I ask that we table that until a future meeting. So I recommend that we adopt the agenda with the exclusion of item twelve point one. I probably should have done that before I called for a motion, but.
You can bring a motion to amend the agenda, and see if you have a second?
Well, I move to amend the agenda to exclude item twelve point one, is there a second for that?
Yes, I second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number five, members of the public wishing to address the board. And just as a reminder for the public, we adopted some alternative protocols for public comment since we've been meeting virtually in response to COVID nineteen. There are now two opportunities to engage in public comment, one where you can join the meeting live and deliver your comments verbally, and if you're interested in pursuing that option, please see the district's website for details about how to do so. And as is the continued practice since we've been meeting remotely, members of the public who'd like to submit public comment in writing are welcome to do so as well. And details about how to do that are also posted as part of this agenda and as part of the communication that you can find on the school board website. So tonight we have one person who's joining us live for public comment, Superintendent Santorino, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, so please welcome Matthew Leistra, who wants to speak to you regarding schools' safe starts.
Mr. Leistra, I want to welcome you to the meeting, you'll have three minutes to give your comments once you get started.
Okay, the only one, I'll try to be a, I'll try to be a good representation of the general public tonight. Tacoma Public School Board members, my name is Matthew Leistra, I'm a parent of four children, one attending Mason Middle School, two attending Sherman Elementary, and one attending North Tacoma Cooperative Preschool, which utilizes a TPS property. I want to first thank all of you for your efforts on behalf of our children, especially during such a uniquely challenging time. I'm sure the current situation is more than any of you bargained for when you were taking these positions on, so thank you for that. As a TPS parent, I do want to express my frustration with the seeming lack of an updated plan or pathway towards in-person classes and communication around that, particularly for younger students. That's where my comments are directed specifically. In March, when little was known about COVID, I understood the choice to go remote. However, in the nine months that have followed, we've learned much about COVID, and there is now a substantial body of scientific research that suggests elementary school children, in particular, experience some of the lowest rates of COVID contraction and some of the lowest rates of viral spread. We have examples of school districts around us in the state of Washington, around the country, and indeed around the world, that have made it a priority to keep schools open or to reopen them without them then contributing to the larger outbreaks that we're seeing in our broader population. TPS regrettably has taken the opposite stance, applying some now seemingly arbitrary thresholds for higher-risk populations to justify remote-only learning for one of the lowest-risk populations, specifically kindergarten through fifth grade. The numbers and percentages of transmission jump up beyond that age group. I have to believe by now TPS has secured sufficient PPE and readyed physical space to at least allow for potentially a kindergarten first-grade pilot return to school, similar to what the Peninsula School District has had success recently doing. Tacoma Public Schools also now knows that it can make an independent plan and determination about when to return to in-person learning that does not rely solely on the approval of the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. Dr. Chen made that clear and clarified that about three or four weeks ago, again in conjunction with the Peninsula School District. So what I would simply like to ask for is TPS to set about communicating a new plan to parents, and more communication generally about reopening our schools, and incorporates everything that we've learned so far this year. COVID transmission and spread among K through five in particular occurs at significantly lower rates than the community at large. Mass and physical distancing, hand washing, temperature checks, and app-based tracing are all tools that I think we now have and can be deployed safely to reopen in 2021. Distance learning is detrimental to our kids' mental, physical, and emotional development, not to mention the stresses that we have at home.
Your time is expired, can you add your comment?
Yep, I believe we can, I believe we can do this incrementally safely, but it requires your leadership to take a fresh look at what we've learned, and to incorporate that into a fresh plan in the new year to get.
Time is up.
Person, yeah, thank you, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Leistra.
Yep.
And we typically don't respond to comments real time, but I think if some of what you addressed might be, some of what you asked might be spoken to in Superintendent's update about COVID reopening, some of it won't be, but thank you for the comment.
Yep, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Santorino, we also read the names of those who have submitted comment in writing.
Yes, so we have had two comments submitted, Madison Severson, regarding all students need access to a school social worker in every Tacoma Public School. And secondly, Danisha Daniels, regarding dismantling TPS district race disproportionality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to those of you who've taken the time to listen into these meetings as we continue to have them, and for those of you who have submitted comment, the board receives these comments in advance, that's why there are asks or requirements that you submit your comments twenty-four hours in advance, we have a chance to take a look at them. Again, we encourage your public comment and appreciate the participation. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community, there are none tonight. Item number seven, the superintendent's report, seven point one, COVID nineteen updates.
So thank you, I've asked Dr. Garcia to give us our latest COVID update, you'll see some things that you've seen before, but I think it's important for the public to hear again, you know, and to review some of those items that are navigating the decisions that we're making, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent, and I'll also be joined tonight with Ms. Courtney Leach, will be giving us some final financial implications as well from a COVID. So Tom, if you can please bring up the slide deck. And just, we give these pretty much at every board meeting that we can, just a quick update of where we are and how our progress is going. So this is obviously for tonight's meeting, and next slide please, Tom. So as a county, we remain over the seventy-five per one hundred thousand, which is part of the state decision tree, and for our fourteen accounts, currently Pierce County is averaging over three hundred per day. And so the county has not changed, and the state has not changed their state decision tree to date. And so this does limit schools' abilities to open unless there are situations that have been approved by the health authority. The high category means that we can still serve students with the highest needs in small groups or cohorts, and we currently have small groups of students on campuses. At this time, until the state decision tree or Pierce County changes, all students will remain in remote learning until further notice. We are hearing rumors, we have not seen it, that the state decision tree may change, which would add additional flexibilities to schools across the state to adjust and open in different models, whether it's hybrid or face-to-face full-time. Next slide please. This week, we were averaging approximately three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven students that were enrolled in Tacoma Online, and our attendance was right around ninety percent, eighty-nine point seven-six. I want to remind us that our enrollment across the district is down, we're calibrating right around three point five percent, various factors are contributing that. Special ed students, McKinney-Vento students, even high school and some middle school students are in small groups when appropriate. Want to remind families, it's very critical that they are working with their students to turn in any missing assignments, and checking their student grades through Schoology. We're trying to use the phone calling system to reach out to families, let them know if a student is struggling in their classes, especially at the secondary level. Some exciting news, five thousand one hundred and eighty-five laptops have arrived in Tacoma and are being prepared and shipped to our elementary schools for distribution starting Monday. This distribution will allow all of our K-two students, which will bring the district one-to-one before winter break, so all K through twelve will have one-to-one. There are more computers coming, and both in January and February, so any student with an older computer would also get a new upgraded computer. So that is the, where computers will be coming to all K-two families, and we've been communicating them starting next week. Next slide please, Tom. Courtney, I'm going to turn it over to you to give some financial pieces.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. Members of the board, there are four distinct COVID nineteen response funding streams I'd like to update you on this evening. The first is FEMA. You'll recall that we submitted a request to FEMA and did receive about twenty thousand dollars in reimbursement. FEMA allowable expenses for school districts has shifted slightly, and we see an opening to apply for about seventy thousand more in revenues to support our purchases of masks and disinfectant. The second is our CARES-ESR funding stream through OSPI. Our award amount has stayed constant at eight point two million. As of November, we have spent down and submitted claims for almost four million of that funding. And with our adjustments in staffing due to COVID and invoices arriving as we spend down, we expect that gap between our award and the amount of revenues received to close rapidly in the coming two months. Item number three, CARES Pierce County support, our initial award was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you'll recall that that was increased, doubled to one point five million, we have fully expended that award, which fantastically supported the purchase of many e-resources our students are and teachers are currently using, startup of Schoology, school supplies, and has supported unemployment insurance, which is hitting the district at amounts greater than anticipated. A new funding stream has come down through OSPI, you may have heard, there's a CARES School Technology Program supplying districts with devices, so we applied to that program and have been awarded two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We will receive that when we make use of it to purchase additional devices. So of our ten million dollars in COVID support funding, we have spent just over fifty-four percent of that funding, and we do again expect that gap to close rapidly in the coming months. Next slide please, Tom. To remind you, going to remind you of two funding streams that we are currently pursuing that are still active. FEMA, again, our current award, we expect to apply for more funding. We get seventy-five percent of eligible costs that we submit. And due to the shifts in FEMA funding, we are meeting with our FEMA contact monthly to make sure that we are well-informed. Next slide please, Tom. And again, CARES-ESR, please remember that this is intended to support district costs throughout the school year and into next if required. It will not take that long to spend it down, but it is available to us to adapt to continuing changes in conditions. Next slide please. And very good news from some of our partners here in Tacoma, OSPI has awarded forty community-based organizations throughout Washington State with awards, grant awards supporting their work to support students across the state, and a number of awards were made to TPS partners locally. So a big thank you to Mary Bridge, YMCA, Hilltop Artists, Communities and Schools statewide, and our local Friends of the Children chapter, they have, they're doing tremendous work to support our students and families during this time. Next slide please. Back to you, Dr. Garcia.
So we just want to give the community a couple more critical updates, so we are continuing our pilot and our ELO programming, which is virtual through a partnership through the Wallace Foundation and GTCF, and those registrations are going out again. In the month of November, we had less school days, but we still had a pretty significant amount of meals served, over seven, or one hundred and seventy-eight thousand meals. We are still collecting free and resalvage applications, and we want to remind folks those are critical to our future. There are still spots available in our community partner day camps, expanding to other sites as needed. The WI recently voted to amend the current sports season, and so we wanted to make sure that families knew that. There are some information on schools' websites as well. With the WI Season Two, which consistently consists of winter sports, which is scheduled, which was, is scheduled to begin practices February first. So just want to let all of our athletes know that sports are still on the table. Starting after the winter holiday, we will be able to do some small group outside sports training, physical training on a volunteer basis. And so you'll see more information coming out from the district in the next couple of days on that as well. We are actively working with state and county officials on the latest information, both in COVID testing and vaccinations. So we attempted to try to get in early on the pilots for the testing, which is allowing school districts like the Peninsula Eatonville and White River to do some opening up of schools. Unfortunately, we were not, and like the other county, our school districts in the county, able to do that. We were in meetings as early as, or as late as today, and those pilots are ending this next week, and there is no clarity of what means that afterwards. But there was not the financial stability by the county to be able to provide those, that. And we just want to remind everyone that we recognize that this is a difficult time, but if you're an employee here, or if you're coming to visit our campuses, please stay home if you're not feeling well. We are seeing still opportunities in even our small groups where there are situations where there is cases being reported. And finally, next slide, Tom. And we want to end on a, on a high with our COVID update and our recognized Nora, and so what you see here is Nora is a student from the Grants School of the Arts, and Scholastic America does a competition where they ask students to do a portrait of a president, and so all presidents, and you select for your president, and you do a portrait. And Nora here was the winner of the Dwight Eisenhower Portrait Across America. And so big congratulations to Nora and the staff at Grant. And that is our COVID update for today.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia, that is a very impressive picture, so congratulations to Nora. I have a couple of questions, but before asking mine, I want to open it up to members of the board who have questions or comments about the COVID update presentation, Director Baumright, do you have questions or comments?
Maybe just a point of clarification for Deputy Superintendent to, in addressing this whole issue, and it's so confusing, this issue of, you know, some of the districts like Peninsula, and like you mentioned the three, and that's a pilot project, right? That, that there was a certain amount of money allotted by the county, and, and only three, they had only money for a few small, small districts to do this, and so we didn't get in, we weren't chosen for that, and so, and as you said, it's over this week. So there, it's in January, everyone's, unless new funding comes available, all bets are off, and.
Yes, we don't know what the plan is, and we've asked, you know, what about expanding to additional school districts supporting pilots in there? And we have not been able to get an affirmation of one way or the other, so it was spent by CARES money, and so as Courtney mentioned, do you, these care, these funding sources sometimes have deadlines, they have to be spent there. And so these small pilots were in there designed to do that, sorry.
And my question sort of though, it's confusing between, you know, what, is that they were pilots specifically, and the pilot was basically to pay for the onsite testing of students and staff, correct?
Correct.
And so if that weren't in place, they wouldn't be able to be open to serve students in person.
And that was the justification in order to not follow the state decision tree to gather that information in there. And, you know, and candidly across the state, and we face this challenge, is there's, there's different guidance that is being applied in every county and in there, and so when the question asks, and you're going to even see other counties that say we're, or excuse me, school districts that say, well, we're scheduled to start at the end of the next semester. But that scheduling in our county is still based and predicted on whether or not the, the numbers get down to a certain level. So they, they have continued to adjust as that goes, so we have said the same message, which is, is as soon as the numbers allow us to bring students back in a safe manner, we will continue to do that. We have a plan, a rollout plan, we are starting with our earliest grade levels. We have vetted that plan with the Pierce County Health Department, and so we are, we're actively waiting for that. And then the conversation we're at, when vaccinations do hit, and when are they able to be administered to educators and what are those implications? Are all still things that we're back, very actively engaged in.
Thank you, that clarifies that for me.
I just want to inject the follow-up because it follows up pretty directly with Director Baumright's question. Can you say plainly where authority for reopening kind of really lies right now? And I know it's complicated, you just spoke to the role that the testing played in creating a justification for opening in some districts, but there is this narrative out there that school districts ultimately have the authority to reopen. But there, like you said, there are guidelines that prohibit us from meeting in person until, meeting as a board in person until we reach a certain threshold of transmission, there are all these guidelines that are working in and out of play. So can you say a little bit more plainly like what the significance of the decision tree is, and how it impacts our agency with regard to being able to reopen?
The state decision tree is a model that is, is intended to be applied across the state to provide school districts guidance to when you can safely open and when you cannot safely open. You have as a governance agency, the fiduciary and legal responsibility to follow that guidance, or you put yourself, the school district potentially at risk for insurance for others if you choose to go outside of that guidance. So there are, I'm sure, sit situations where across the state, we know that maybe the health department says, here's a different guidance in a local authority, our health department has not said that to our knowledge yet, that says you can do this. Now, they have said in these situations, we're going to work with these districts and these pilots to allow variance from that health, from that state decision tree, we have not, for all the reasons that I mentioned, yet not been able to do that. In addition to that, we have agreements with our labor groups on what guidance we will follow. And we have a very solid relationship with our labor partners, and we have a commitment to follow that to those guidances and those agreements to ensure that we are protecting our, our staff members as well as we go through this. So the conversation and a lot of the research is also based off of the narrative that students are not transmissionating that, but the adults that are working in the buildings also have, we have a due responsibility, you as policymakers and fiduciary responsibility of the financial responsibility to protect and follow those guidelines. So it's, it's multifaceted, I, you asked me for a clear, and I didn't deliver that, and I apologize, but I'll try again. The state, you have a responsibility to follow that state decision tree, it is administered by the governor's office. The health department plays a role in making sure that you follow those, or if there is an exception, that is followed in a safe manner.
Thank you. And last comments before I go to Director Keating, twice he shows her hand up, because we have so few, we do have students and staff in buildings right now, I feel like there is a narrative, well, it's not just a narrative, there's a lack of visibility on the trans, the level of transmission that still occurs with even just a handful of people in building, so I, I think that is important for members of the community to know that it's, we're not immune within schools from incidents of people coming, being tested positive and having contact with others. And just as a question almost to pose because of our context, there is, I'll call this a narrative, or a set of evidence that points to the fact that kids aren't super-spreaders or that, but I just wonder how much we can actually know about that, given that we've been shut down pretty much across the country, and kids haven't been in school, so I don't know if the data would look the same if we had gone back to face-to-face. I'll just offer that as a question mark about the actual reality of how likely it is that students contribute to transmissions, given that we haven't been back face-to-face. Director Keating, you want to share your comment, and then we'll go to Superintendent Santorino.
Oh, it's okay, Superintendent, if you want to follow up, and my question can wait too, or my comment can wait.
I was just going to concur with, with what Director Cobb said, and that also, you know, I'm on frequent calls with superintendents from across the country, and there is this ebb and flow back and forth, and we certainly have had evidence of school districts that have gone full in and gotten their students in and followed, and then they're taking them back out because of the threat of the disease. So, you know, the jury is still out, and I think you could probably find some research that would support your position, no matter whatever it is. And in Tacoma, because of an abundance of caution, and because of some of the issues that Dr. Garcia talked about, we are, we're going to, I am committed to, we are committed to following the guidance from the decision tree and the health department and the governor and the state superintendent.
I was just going to add, it's not specific to reopening schools, but the other thing that, and this is more, I think for the public, the OPMA, Open Public Meetings Act has continually changed, I think, I don't know, Vice President Baumright, I'm not sure if you remembered what number it was up to, but like twenty-eight, like it's been revised twenty-eight times approximately since March. So the, the, you know, I don't remember which update it was, I think it was in October, where OPMA was updated to say that no, that boards cannot meet in person unless you're in phase, I believe, phase one. Well, we're in phase two, so, okay, anyway, so, but now the current OPMA has states that no business meetings can take place in person, no matter what your phase is, where you are, and that's going to expire, that one's, that piece will expire on the fourteenth, but is anticipated to be extended. So it's like this continual, and if I may speak, I'm sure that Ms. True Blood will graciously correct me, but like this is another piece of trying to navigate so many complexities, and I think, you know, it just continues to change. And I just think that that's, for the public, another challenge in how we can even conduct business you know, as a board and engage with the public, it just is so challenging to, one, keep up with it, but also adapt and be flexible with the continual changes.
Just one last, I'm sorry, Director Stroger, yeah, I haven't had a chance, I apologize.
That was me chiming in, but you're right, Director Stroger hasn't had an opportunity to chime in, so I defer to him for questions or comments.
You're muted.
No, I don't, I don't, I always say I don't have something, then I say something. I just think that it's important to, just to call out, sometimes, sometimes I just need to be plainly stated. Everybody that you see on this meeting, staff, superintendents, board members, everybody here is working in the best interest of our students. You know, we're trying to keep folks safe. You can see in the reports, things put together by superintendent, deputy superintendent. So I just, I just want to raise the level of thinking a little bit higher, just to understand that, like Dr. Garcia said, it's multifaceted here. Like if we could get the kids in the school safely, obviously we would. But we want to make sure we follow that state decision tree. And when it says we can go back, I'm sure we'll be back.
To that point, Tacoma is in a slightly different position than some of our colleagues in other districts in the county. We're the fourth largest, sometimes third or fourth largest district in the state. So when we take a risk and go out on a limb, it's a different level of scrutiny about our actions and our steps. And it might be for a smaller peninsula or Derringer or others in the county who have smaller communities, smaller student populations. And the level of risk is different. So there's just a different level of scrutiny and higher level of expectation of adherence to guidance that I feel gets put on us. And so I think that's also a dynamic to be acknowledged to in contrast to some of our colleagues in other districts here in Pierce County.
So Director Cobb, I'd just like to build on that comment. So a lot of folks were asking, so why these districts and why not us? And you know, these districts are about, are small, the number of kids that are served across the Tacoma district in small group are larger than some of these districts' elementary school populations. And so it's not that we're not serving students in that way. And so the county, when they made the selection, the health department made the selection as a, they didn't have enough resources to do a Tacoma, a P U Alup and to see and how that would work versus choosing some smaller districts. And so, you know, we're good partners in all this. But we're, I, I think Director Stroger said are very, very articulate, we're committed to trying to get our kids back as fast as we safely can. And so we're going to continue to try to find new ways and look at and advocate for resources to do so. But it will be done in a, in a safe manner.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or Director or Superintendent Santorino or others? Okay. Well, let's move on to item number 7.2, Wilson High School renaming update.
So we've got Principal Bernadette Ray here and some of the members from her renaming Wilson committee. I want to just give a shout out to them right up front that they have been working so hard amidst among all these other duties that they've had that are assigned and have continued just to work forward. Thank you so much, Bernadette. Principal Ray, for doing this hard work and being committed to it and still maintaining all the work as a principal. So thank you so much. And thanks for agreeing to come here tonight and give us an update. And thank you especially to the members of your committee that decided to join you.
Superintendent Santorino, turning it over to Ms. Ray and the team. Can you provide a little bit of context about how this work group came to be and what the impetus for it was?
Sure. So we have a policy that addresses the name, you know, the naming of buildings and the renaming of buildings. And usually what happens is that it's a group of citizens that come together and say, hey, we really want to look at this. And that's the same thing that happened at Wilson. There was a part of our, some citizens from our community and some staff and some students that really wanted to look at changing the name of Wilson because of some of the the historical behavior of Woodbridge, Woodrow, Woodrow Wilson, who was the person that the school was named after, that Wilson was named after. And so the policy says clearly that you get a person together to look into the community and that it has to be a community process and you have to bring in folks and talk about it. And then, then after that, the process goes, the superintendent looks at it and then takes it to the board. And so we're, we're in the middle of that process. Was that clear enough?
That was great. And just for the community, the boards receive an update and recommendations tonight from that group, but isn't taking act on the recommendation.
Thank you Superintendent Santorino and members of the board. Good evening. First, I'd like to say hello to Indigo and Nathan. This is my first meeting where I've attended where two of the student representatives are my very own Wilson Rams. So I'm happy to be on the call with them. Go Rams. And we're joined tonight by Xavier Cooper and I believe Will Mitchell is on the call and they are two members of our committee. And you are welcome to turn on your cameras, gentlemen, if you'd like to, if you're comfortable doing that. And Xavier is actually going to talk us through the proposal. He was one of the initiators of the committee that has done this work. And so I welcome Xavier. Xavier Cooper, class of 2010, I believe, to go ahead and talk to us about what our committee is recommending.
How are you guys doing? My name is Xavier Cooper. I'm Wilson, class of 2010. And I'm speaking on behalf of our name change committee. I contacted Principal Bernadette Ray this spring about a possible rename change of Woodrow Wilson because of his racist past in US history. We, as a committee, have met, I believe, over eight times now. And we've narrowed it down to two options. One of the options is local educator and city council leader, Dr. Dolores Silas. Option number two was Wilson High School and not to include Woodrow in it, so to remove the Woodrow completely. And so those are our two options right now.
I would add, thank you Xavier. I would add, there was also some discussion in the first option. It was clear to the committee that it was important to them to have one option be to name the school after a woman of color. And Dolores Silas is a local leader. And the policy very clearly states that a local person is preferred in a renaming situation. There was also discussion of Ruby Bridges, who is a more nationally recognized educator who's now working with an educational foundation. We kind of liked the play on Bridges because we are so near the Tacoma Narrows, but absolutely respect that that local person who was a Tacoma School District educator could be a really great fit. And then I just also would like to add that I'm so thankful to our committee members. We had a really rich group. We had parents, we had students, we had alum, we had a local historian and an economist joining us. So we had multiple lenses as part of this conversation. And regardless of what decisions are made about the name change, I will be ever grateful to this group because I feel like the process was very thorough and I couldn't have asked for a better group of individuals to really ask some hard questions about what makes the most sense for our community and starting with Mr. Cooper. So thank you for that.
Ms. Ray, can you build on your comments just a little bit by sharing some more about how the process unfolded? Like, how did people get engaged? What steps did you take to understand people's feelings about a name change or not? Can you say a little bit more about the process? And just anecdotally, I have a colleague at work who lives in Seattle and her husband went to Wilson and mentioned getting like asked to fill out a survey or something. So can you talk a little bit about the process overall and how you all arrived at the recommendations that you put before us?
Certainly. So initially, in informing the committee, we attempted, we, Xavier, myself, working of course with Superintendent Santorino and following the policy. It was very important that we had a diverse group of individuals to come together to discuss. And really the first task, once the committee was set, was to reach out to students and see students who might be interested in being a part of the process. And then once we did that, it really became developing questions for a survey. And so we created a survey that we knew we would post on the Wilson website, on Twitter, on the district website. And we ended up having, oh gosh, about 5,000 respondents to that survey. And so from that, we took quite a bit of time. The majority of our meetings were spent disaggregating that data and taking a look at what are folks really saying? And that is how we came about the prioritization of naming after a woman of color. But we also wanted to honor that rich tradition of Wilson a lot. I mean, Wilson is a great school and it's been called Wilson since the beginning. And so many people spoke out about, well, you know, what, what does that look like if we completely change the name? And there was a lot of conversation about brand recognition and what that means and what that would look like moving forward. Of course, we also spoke about costs and what a rebrand looks like. And whether or not it's responsible to consider that during a pandemic and in times when there are so many other things going on.
Thank you. I'm going to invite, well, I think you mentioned Mr. Mitchell's on the call too. So I want to invite him to share any thoughts or comments if he wants to chime in, but then open it up to members of the board to raise questions or to reflect on what you said.
Okay, can you hear me?
He can hear you.
So, so I was, as Ms. Ray discussed, my wife and I both were part of the committee. And I thought that we did some, some really good work as a committee. We came together, a group of us, different races, different cultures, different backgrounds, different ethnicities. And we had some hard conversations and it was conversations such as, you know, how and why it was necessary for the change. You know, how did we get to that place where we needed to make the changes? And those were conversations, I thought, while they were necessary, they were also hard conversations. And we derived at a place where we, we came to a consensus that that was a great need for that change. And we didn't always agree as a committee. But in the end, we did come to the conclusion that there needed to be a change. And so I'm grateful for being a part of that committee and I support this decision 100% my wife and I. And just want to thank Ms. Ray for allowing us to be a part of that committee.
Thank you. And I want to, oh.
Hello, I'm, I'm Will's wife, DeShonda. And I would just add to what everyone has said that we've had two children to graduate from Wilson High School. And our, our youngest graduated just this past June. So it's no surprise to any of us on this call, on this meeting, that in our world, in our nation, we are going through some severe crisis in terms of injustices, in terms of police brutality, in terms of just just climate, just being uneasy and very stressful during this time in the middle nonetheless of a pandemic. And so, you know, I think we all realize that we, if we're, if we're not a part of the change, we're not really a part of the solution. And so it's what can we do? Even if it seems as small as changing a name to make an impact. And, you know, and not everybody's going to necessarily agree, but what everybody's going to do is going to have a conversation. They're going to have a conversation about it. And I think that's really where we all decided that there's a whole lot of education that can come out of just all of us just coming to the table, sitting down, understanding various perspectives and embracing each other just in a different way. And putting up, you know, moving forward in a positive way to really impact something beyond who we are. So.
Thank you. Okay, I have to, I can't let it pass. Moment of personal privilege, I just want to thank the Mitchells for their participation in this committee and also for being a part of my life growing up. Family, family becomes friends, my best friend's family is connected to their family. And it's just a joy to see your faces here and thank you for your engagement in the community. So I want to open up the board to raise comments and also can't miss the opportunity to hear from our student board members on this topic too. So members of the board, if you have thoughts or reflections, please feel free to offer those and then we'll turn to our student board members for any reactions that they have to the proposal on the table.
As, as a Wilson Ram, class of 1990, I actually would appreciate if it's okay to hear from particularly the Ram students before the adults say anything, if that's all right.
Okay, let's start with, I think we have Indigo on. Indigo, you're a Wilson Ram, right? Indigo, do you want to share any comments or reflections or thoughts about the proposed name change?
Of course, I would love to. So I think it's something that's obviously necessary and I'm so glad it's happening. And personally, it's not something that I've looked into, but I'm glad someone else pays attention to it because I don't want to be, you know, a representation of something that was, you know, racist and, you know, putting other people down. And I know that's not what my school stands for. So I don't want to represent that. So I'm really glad this is happening. And I'm really glad that someone saw that and spoke out and I'm just glad to be a part of it. And if I can get involved in any way on that committee, I would love to. And just kind of help out, have a student perspective, but I'm just happy it's happening and it's very if, if what's happening within my school can happen around the nation would be so wonderful. So I'm glad that it can start here and I'm glad it's something that I can be a part of.
Thank you. Nathan, are you a Ram too?
Yeah, I am. So I guess I have two ways of looking at this. The one, yeah, I think it'd be great to have a name change. I like the options that, that the committee came up with. I think they're great. And I was, I was reading through the document before this and I like the rationale. I think it's it's really interesting and both of the people I think would be perfect to be the name of the school. And then also, but I also saw it like just changing it to Wilson without the Woodrow, I think would also be a good idea. I don't, I don't really have a preference right now, I think. Cause there's also like the idea that, you know, the school, I don't really feel like I'm ever connected to Woodrow Wilson when I'm there. It's more just like Wilson as its own entity. So that's kind of the way I think of it too. But right now, I don't know if I really have a preference between the two different options that they laid out. That's kind of how I look at it.
Thank you. And I'll invite our other student board members to chime in too, if you have thoughts about this. You're pretty connected to your schools too and the name and the identity. So love to hear your thoughts on it too.
Um, yeah, I'm not a Wilson student, but my home school is Wilson. So I, I had heard rumors about a possible name change, but I didn't know it was, you know, already in action. So I'm really excited to hear that. Yeah, I, I'm really happy about this. I support it 100%. Obviously I don't have a super strong connection to Wilson. So I don't have, I guess, as maybe as big of a stake as actual Wilson, Wilson students. But you know, I'm glad that as a community, we're working to stop glorifying racist people and racist history and taking steps to, you know, support our own community members and, you know, raise up the actions of community, community members that have really put in work to make our community better. And, you know, as a student of color in the TPS system, it is nice to see that, you know, we're acknowledging the history and trying to make sure that all students feel comfortable at their own schools. So I'm, I'm really excited about it and thank you for putting in the work to do this.
Caitlin, do you want to chime in? No pressure. You're not obligated to, but I want to make the space for you.
Yeah, so I'm also not very connected to Wilson, but I go to Stadium and Stadium and Wilson are kind of like rivals. But I think it's really good that there's like a team of people really actively working to try and change the name. There's like this school in Federal Way called Thomas Jefferson, and I know their students want to change the name, but the adults are not working as hard to. So I think it'd be really good to change the name. But if you, if it was changed to something completely different, it would definitely take a while to get used to, but I'm good with both options.
Thank you. I so appreciate hearing your perspective. I think the adults get so caught up in tradition and thinking that things have to be away. So it's nice to get your perspectives on it. So again, I'll defer back to members of the board for So again, I'll, I'll defer back to members of the board for your comments before we move on to the consent agenda. Members of the board, do you have thoughts, comments?
Dr. Keating? Well, as, as a Wilson RAM, and Ms. Ray and I had some really great conversations in the, in the end of the school year when this was kind of really getting going. And I think that much like the land acknowledgement, I think the, that there is this, in, in order to move forward, we have to name injustices and harm that has, that have been done. And in order to educate and raise awareness and create better representation, I think it's really important to have these conversations. And I'm very grateful to those that committed, that were participated in this committee. Cause I know these conversations are not easy or comfortable. And a- as a Wilson RAM, I guess I would say I would be thrilled with whichever decision. You know, wherever it went, because my, I think it was Nathan that said it, that when I, you know, when I think of the high school I attended, I don't think of Woodward Wilson. I think Wilson. And really, really, it's not a name that I was connected to. I'm connected to the experiences and the people that were in the building, not a name. So I'm, I'm just really grateful that this is happening. And thank you, Principal Ray, for taking the lead on this and your dedication to your students and to Wilson and the district.
I'll do, I'll go next. Without any direct knowledge, I'm making a general statement. Without any direct knowledge on what it takes to rename a school, looking at that can seem like a mountain that you don't want to climb. So I just wanted to take my time to be able to just commend you for bringing it to, to Principal Ray and the committee for getting together and putting out an opportunity for folks to give their feedback. I, I'm always the one calling out the obvious here. There are always opportunities for folks to share what they think about something by way of the survey or whatever the case may be. Some folks take the opportunity, 5,000 in this case. Other folks decide not to, and then they complain about it afterwards. So I just want to commend the, the, the committee for putting that together, giving folks the opportunity to share their voice. And then now here we are, potentially getting ready to move forward with something that's big. And it's great to hear the student perspectives first, because that shows where we really stand. I read something, I think I shared it with Director Keating, nothing about us without us. And so it's great to have the students' feedback. And thank you guys for the work that you've done.
So I, I'm really impressed with the hard work that you've put in and the, the compromises that you've discussed. And I want to thank both the Mitchells and Mr. Cooper and all of the committee members and Principal Ray for the thoughtfulness and long hours of work and, and, and actually reaching out to the community. And like everyone has said before, the student voice is, is critically important to hear. And my own, my eldest daughter is a, is a Wilson RAM. She graduated in 2014. So 2012, sorry, the other one graduated in 2014. So many kids. Anyway, so 2012. So I know it's, you know, it's important, and I've asked her, of course, what she thought about this. And she was all for, all for the change if, if it really ra- ra- educated people and raised people to the issue. And she said, if anyone feels at all uncomfortable with going to a school because of its name, then the name needs to change. And I thought that was actually a really, I was really proud. I thought that was a great statement for, you know, a 20-something to say about a school she felt incredibly bonded and, and connected to and felt like she could give that up if it made somebody else who was going there feel better about the school they went to. So I just want to say, I'm not sure what the process is, and I guess that's my question. Is, and I don't know if Superintendent can help us out here with what the process, how this goes from here. But I know there's recommendations from a committee. I, Director Stroger mentioned the process, you know, what does it take to rename a school? And I think that there are some huge financial impacts in terms of the change and how that happens. But I am totally open to moving forward however the committee seems to want to go. So thank you for giving us your, your choices and, and your input. And the, and really thank you for initiating the conversation. Appreciate it.
So, you know, I believe our next step then is to really do some analysis of the, and compose the action item so that the board can look at and look at the data and, you know, look at some of the ramifications. I know that Director, I mean that Principal Ray and her committee put a lot of time into what the financial implications are. And so it does mean that we need to do some additional work so that you have, before you make a decision and before you act on it as an action item, you know, that you have all the, you know, all the differences and, and all the data that you, you should consider.
Well, I, unless there are further comments, I just want to thank you all for joining us and for the presentation and for all the work that went into getting to these recommendations. And for the members of the community, just as an FYI, a similar proposal or has been put forward for renaming Jason Lee Middle School. So there has been a similar committee engaged and similar work to identify a recommendation about how to move forward. So we will hear from that committee next month. So again, thank you for, to the committee and thanks to you again, students for weighing in on this. And we will continue the conversation.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Principal Ray.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I have a motion to adopt.
There's a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion was adopted. Item number nine, policy matters. There are no policy matters tonight. Item number 10, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. The next quarterly report is planned for February 2021. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacoma schools.org and to departments, business and finance and financial reporting. Item 11, curriculum and instruction. There are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item number 12, business matters. There are no business matters tonight in line in response to the amendment up to the agenda that we made. Item number 13, other business, 13.1, approval of resolution for January 2021, Whole Child Month.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Director of Whole Child recommends that the Board of Directors approve the resolution declaring January 2021 Whole Child Month.
Thank you. And Dr. Garcia, do you know what year it is that we've been doing this? Or been able to declare this month Whole Child Month?
I believe this is our fourth or fifth, but I can get you that. And then we also put in a request for the state to adopt a resolution to recognize Whole Child Month. And that's why it's not considered to come a Whole Child Month, because we believe that this is something that all, all this community should support. And I believe they've also been doing it since, I want to say 2016. It was the first year, January of 2016. And we also ask our community partners in the city of Tacoma to also consider adopting a resolution to support it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item number 13.1?
I still move.
There's a second?
Second.
Any comments from the board? I'll just share. I think it's like doing this is somewhat symbolic, but I think it really does get us to call attention to the importance of supporting and meeting the needs of a whole child. So I hope this is a tradition that continues and we continue to partner in the ways that we have with community organizations and others to make sure that we're centering students and everything that we do. So all those in favor of adopting item 13.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 14, report to the board, 14.1, benchmark annual partnerships, volunteers and organizations.
So I know Amanda Scott-Thomas is here along with her partners. And so we welcome them to open their camera and start. Thanks, Amanda.
All right. Hi, everybody. Good to see you all this afternoon and glad to do my report to the board. You will see the first slide always starts with our mission in partnership. And it's to fully engage our parents, community and staff as well as students. I always forget to correct that slide, but I do bake it a priority to include students in that partnership. So parents, community, staff, students in the education of our children. And so that's the goal of the Partnership Office. Each, twice a year, I come before you to present on some highlighted benchmarks of our office. These are a couple of them. We have more, but these are the highlighted benchmarks that I'll be sharing today. Can we go to the slide three, please? A priori benchmark. I'm looking at the screen. Did it change?
Yes.
Okay. So priority benchmark, the volunteer numbers for 2020.
Excuse me, Amanda.
I think you're on the wrong, we're on the wrong.
There we go, Tom. Thank you, Tom. There we go. Sorry, Amanda, go ahead, please.
Okay, I see it. All right. So the priority benchmark, we report the number of volunteers for a school year. That number goes from September of that, of 2019 to the end of 2020. So it goes from September all the way to September. And we were at 6,000 for, for volunteers. You will see that that is a decrease from the year before, but that number only goes to March due to school closures. And we'll talk a little bit more about that next slide, but those were our numbers for last year's count. Next slide, please. So the key findings were that we've had a decrease, of course, in the volunteer data due to COVID, due to the pandemic. So we were only able to count March partially. But I am happy to say that most of our volunteer numbers, 50% is, takes place or the, the biggest bulk of our volunteers are registered in September and November, so the first part of the year. So we were actually in March at 75% of our total last year. And we do count that for the entire year. Again, we would have counted March to the end of school year and through the summers, summer, because we are still processing volunteers through the summer. And so we were looking pretty good, but things halted for formal processing of volunteers. That's not to say that folks didn't volunteer, but that's when our data stops for the year. Again, we were looking pretty good at 75% in March. So I'm expecting to see some good numbers for, for this next year. Next slide, please. So this slide, I'm sorry, I'm going between slides here. The next steps, we had, I spoke to you the last time I was before you about a pilot project for a visitor sign in. The goal of that was to get more explicit data around our volunteers in that, that pilot. Using that new platform, we were able to capture demographic information. It was going to be a seamless system where it has a centralized database. Cause right now, schools are collecting data each at their sites. And so there's no centralized volunteer database, though we do manage and coordinate through that, coordinate that through the, for the district. We had to suspend that again due to the school closures. We also had a volun- or have a volunteer management solution platform called BOMO. I talked to you about this last year as well. And this was also another way to get more unique and explicit data about our volunteers and volunteer projects. It's sort of like a Facebook for volunteer projects. So schools, counselors, principals, teachers could post volunteer opportunities and community members could engage. And we will resume that when school resumes and it's safe to do so. So that is suspended as well. And so what we will continue to do is work with partner organizations and community volunteers to provide a basic needs and resource distribution as needed for the holidays and the new year. And so we're continuing to do that work. We're continuing to do volunteer engagement and see the support of our community. And while I had you, I wanted to give a shout out and sort of a, a report. To date, we have distributed over 20,000 school supply kits with help from some of those funds that, that Courtney talked about, we reported to you on. The Partnership Office was able to get some of those funds that had to be spent on supporting students with, with materials. And so we were able to use some of that money as well as money from the Health of Student Fund, which is a trust established by TPS teachers that is contributed to through the United Way. And so we distributed those kits with our partners, the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, Peace Community Center, Eastside Family Support Center and the Tacoma Public Library. And then we did another push of those, and this is inclusive, inclusive of those 20,000 kids at the start of the school year, working with the Tacoma Community Foundation, Tacoma Housing Authority, the Boys and Girls Club, Graduate Tacoma and the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. So they helped us and get those out to students in many different ways. But it was a great partnership that was coordinated by multiple organizations in partnership with the district. Meal and resource distribution continues with volunteers and staff. Church of the Living God continues to do 100 meals a week. We also had a community group, Healthy Kids Coalition, serving Northeast Tacoma. They're still doing a meals program and doing some things for the holidays. And some of the organizations, other organizations that have contributed to meals are Snacks for Schools, St. Leo's, Pacific Foods and FMS Global Care. So I wanted to give them a shout out, recognize them for their contribution to students. Also, just to let you know, for the holidays, we worked with Shalay Hobbs and the TPS School Access Committee to create guidelines, because we heard from our students or from our families and from our principals that families and students were really looking to the school to be what they've always been, which is a resource for goods and services during the holidays. And so we were able to come together to develop safety guidelines that were legally sound to be able to facilitate those distributions at school sites. So one of the rules around that is that it has to be essential giving. So household supplies or meals, and if there were Christmas or holiday items added to that, that would be fine. But we have really specific guidelines around that. Again, as the COVID numbers increased, we wanted to make sure that we were doing it in the most safe way with limited volunteers and electronic gifts when possible. Also, I just have to again, give a shout out to community. This year, you would think that giving would be down, but we have community partners stepping up. So I wanted to recognize the Longshoreman, Tacoma Yacht Club, Giza Credit Union, Tacoma Fire Department, Northeast Tacoma Healthy Kids who contributed and are contributing now for holidays, support to our students and families, as well as our faith community partners. We had Church of the Living God, Eastside Community Church, Tacoma Bible Presbyterian and Life Center, one of our health sector partners, CHI Franciscan. And then we also, I want to give a shout out to our internal folks that have some concerted efforts around giving among TPS staff. We had annual giving and contributions from the eighth floor, Carla, Josh and the leadership team, as well as our Public Information Office and our Human Resource Department. So I know I took a little time to do that, but I think it's important to acknowledge, these are the folks. We know we can't do it alone, but everybody's put their hand to the, to the will here. So we're supporting students and families. So I wanted to thank everybody for their giving and their continued support. Next benchmark? All right, you have the number of formal partnerships established for the last school year, and that's 2019 to 2020. You will see that it's 127 partnerships, which was quite a jump. The reason for that jump, if we look at trends in the past, is that we have several or multiple organizations that will re-up because they are multi-year partnership, partnerships. So they could be anywhere from two, three, five years. And so when they all come due, there's a re-up process. So that sometimes makes those numbers jump. So we have 127 formal partnerships on the So we have a hundred and twenty-seven formal partnerships on the book um from uh the for the nineteen the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And when I say formal partnerships, um the district defines that as partnerships that there is a documented MOU or contract in the books. Uh, and that database is accessible to the public on our website. So you can see all the folks that we have formal part partnerships with. And we do acknowledge there's a host of other informal partners that work with some of our formal partners um or may have an informal relationship with the district, but that data is around our formal partners. Next slide. Um, I I remember uh when I presented to you about partnerships, I wanted to provide you with a little bit more information. Um, when it comes to those partner partnerships in the district, um how, where they're coming from. The partnership office is not the only um uh department in the district that establishes formal partnerships. So that's a visual breakdown of of the departments that we have um that uh establish formal partnerships. So um some of those are done in collaboration, some of those are done um independently, but by department, that's kind of what it looks like as far as uh uh formal partnerships. And I do have more um information about, you know, those partnerships. There's a um a data sheet if um any of the directors are interested in that. Next page. So our key findings, uh again, uh new formal partnerships. Um, it's a district-wide um data that I'm sharing, not just the partnership office. Um, this next move uh information was uh incomplete, I think, when I was before you in May. So I'm just following up to let you know that the uh district's partnership with the city of Tacoma and local employers to employ Tacoma Public Student uh Tacoma Public School Students. Um, we had two twenty new employers or twenty employers that uh participated in the program. There were four new participating employers, which means they're new to the program. And uh seventy-five students from TPS uh participated in in as um in internships um for that program. Uh, and also that school year, um uh the 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 partnership department, that's our department, established um six extended or expanded learning opportunities. So those again are with community-based organizations that bring uh youth development programs to uh students every year. Or our goal is to um to establish um three to um four of those each year. And we met that goal or s- um we went beyond and established six of those partnerships for last school year. Um, next slide. Uh, the exciting work that um I am focused on now besides holiday uh preparation uh and meals and support services and prepping for um school again to start in um after the winter break and making sure that um the students have um school supplies and things that they need. Uh, we're working on a de- uh developing a partner portal, a platform for partners to access data. Right now, um we have, again, because there's a lot of partnership administrators in the district, um people make their data requests um with that that administrator. We're trying to, we're creating a seamless system uh where they'll be able to pull data themselves. Uh, this is across the uh departmental partnership with student life um uh and our legal department, making sure that um what they have access to is legal uh and that there are um uh accommodations for um specific data sets uh and we're working together on that. That's been um a long time coming, but I'm excited about that work. Um, the partnership office continues to collaborate with cross-sector partners. I continue to serve on committees, uh United Way of Pierce County. There are Building Community Resilience Group, the Kids Mental Health of Pierce County. I am still on that uh steering committee. So uh the partnership office as well as being involved in uh grassroots tactical work is still uh very much engaged in system change and uh making sure that the district has representation and a voice at the table. Uh, and then the other um very exciting work that we continue to do this year is supporting uh building principles um for equity uh in equity work, working with Superintendent Santorno and Justina Johnson and the Equity Design Team and Marie Verhar. We're doing some great work there, uh worked with a great principal team to develop the modules on family and community uh engagement, um really highlighting parent and student voice. And so that work continues uh and I also continue to support the district's um family liaisons. We have uh ten this year at elementary schools and we're all um working through a book study together uh called um uh Unreached, uh Teresa Moore from Federal Way, who retired, uh is a Harvard-recognized uh family and community engagement guru, is uh walking with us monthly through that book and we're doing some uh strategic work there. So that is the um, that's my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. I appreciate the report tonight. I'll open up to members of the board to ask questions or to give comment. Director Bonbright?
Um, yeah, well, uh, wow, Amanda, that is quite, quite the report. It's a very full given, given a year where we weren't even in physically in school. It's it's absolutely amazing. But as you pointed out, and as we all know, uh we couldn't have accomplished uh this uh whole virtual um educational system and even begun to put it up without our community partners. So thank you for for all of the hard work you and your team have done. And I really, I also enjoyed seeing that on the one of the last slides, the wheel that showed all the different departments in um TPS that actually have partnerships, official partnership um contracts or MOUs in place. I think it it really shows um the commitment that this administration has to partnerships. Um, a- and it kind of explains a little bit why um why with you and your very mighty small team of two um actually have done, you know, been able to do so much because there it's happening throughout the the agency as a whole. And I and I really want to thank and and commend all of the um agency leads and and directors for uh working with you to make sure that those partnerships are solid and that you're communicating about them. I really like that la- this slide here, the the next slide, the this portal, we're talking about the pair, the partner portal sounds absolutely fantastic. And I would love to hear um some data as that come, as that it gets structured and ready to be implemented. I'd love you to come back and talk to us a little bit about that and and how we're um, who can access it and how that's going to work. I think that's going to be magical. I also um really love the piece that that you're gonna, that you're working with, uh the whole team on the Equity Design Module that that we were briefed on um at the study session and just really um glad that you're engaged with that. Because what we learn here at TPS, we we can are, we have to make sure our partners are, you know, on the same page as we are with our commitment to equity. And I think that um that's, that's a big community um effort. And I think that the fact that all of our partners are also engaged in that and that we're a leader in that is is critical. So thank you so much for for your leadership. Um, I think, and I think for questions, I guess my only one is about um, you know, the whole bit with volunteers. I did, and you said that you it ended in March, so that the numbers you have don't reflect the people that volunteered to help distribute meals um or any of that for the March through June. Cause I know we had a lot of people wanting to to help and we were trying to make sure that our paras had work. And so we were doing, you know, a lot of the paras were focused on being uh with, working with nutrition services. But I I do know there were a lot of folks who did step in and help and so those, they aren't included in the numbers, right?
Uh, no, a lot of them are uh were already in our system. So we have folks that had already been in the system. But some of the new volunteers, because they didn't volunteer at a school or with children, they didn't go through that process.
Got it, okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you for that point of clarification. Anyway, amazing work. Thank you to you and your team and um can't wait to hear the next report. Oh, well, I was gonna say the one other point I wanted to make is that, um, I mean, you're kind of on, you're kind of on the on the platform uh now because, you know, we made a priority benchmark around partnerships. And so we're gonna be uh looking to you to, you know, make sure that we're tracking that. And uh we all thought to, yeah, Amanda could do this. So um looking forward to hearing, um, we're gonna, I guess, hopefully have some time in in two thousand twenty-one have a have a um a meeting where you provide that information. So thanks again for this foundation.
Director Keating?
Um, I don't really have any questions. Um, I'm a little exhausted by the level of work, uh Ms. Scott Thomas, that you and your mighty team uh pull off. And uh, you know, I just uh couldn't say enough about you. And so I'm just really impressed with what you have been able to, what you and your team have been able to do um in the midst of a crisis. I think that it speaks volumes to um the groundwork that you had already laid prior to getting here. And so um you deserve many, many accolades uh for what you give to this community um and to our students. So um I just want to say thank you and thank you to uh your mighty team. Um, yeah, so, thanks.
Thank you. And I have to, I have to say her name or she'll get me. So the team of two is myself and Talana Pinton, um who is the one that helps to coordinate all of the community giving every year. She is a real rock star, could not do this without her um and with our partners. Like there's, when school's out, community definitely was in. So they made my job a pleasure um and a lot easier than um it could have been.
Director Stroger?
No questions, just want to echo that uh thank you from uh Director Keating. You know, oftentimes folks say they got partnerships, but ain't no data to prove it. And I just want to mention that you you have done an amazing job on, you know, collecting data showing where partnerships are, what departments, who's doing what. Uh, and I imagine that it's easy to find in reference. So I appreciate the work that you all have done and I look forward to the portals and things of that nature that that folks will be able to access, because I imagine it'll make it that much easier. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just echo that. I look forward to all of your systems dreams coming to reality. The COVID stopped you, but it's on the horizon. And I wanted to thank you too for all that you were able to accomplish. But I don't want to go, I don't want this to go without saying that we have all worked in organizations where people who get stuff done keep getting more piled on top of them because they get stuff done. So I don't want to get into a place with the partnerships office where we keep raising our expectations because you keep meeting them and we don't resource you effectively. And so I know that the budget and all, like the specific budgets to meet the needs of the office are within the purview of superintendent. But we don't, I don't want to keep every time thanking you for all that you're able to do with the team of two and layer more on you. So I uh I just want to keep being in conversation as we think about our priorities for partnerships and the work that you do and where the needs are and keeping tabs on whether or not um you, you're again, I'm not in the bud- like the specifics of the budget, I'm not trying to go there Superintendent Santono. That um there's always that team player where you know that when times are tough and when there's an immediate need now, they have the network of relationships and partnerships and connections to pull things together. And you are one of those people for us and we just appreciate that, but don't want to burn you out either. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any last comments from the board?
No, well, thank you for the report. We look forward to, again, all your system dreams coming to.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Thanks Amanda.
Okay, I gotta get my agenda back in front of me. Okay, moving on to item number fifteen, Board Reports and Comments. So I'll start with Director Bonbright. Any committee reports, community events or updates or comments to share tonight?
Well, just, I think quickly, it's been, I guess, the last time we reported back on this was no, um, October, sorry, November twelfth. So it's been about a month, lots been and actually a pretty active month. But I won't go into a great deal about about a lot of things, just to say that um we had a great meeting with JMAC, which is the Joint Municipal Municipal Action um Committee, where the CEOs of each of the six agencies uh presented. And I want to thank Superintendent Santono, she did a fabulous job on, um, it was really sort of everyone's um was really interested in, of course, what was going on with schools. And so we actually took up most of the time. But um there were lots of great questions from the other CEOs of um of the other organizations, Metro Parks Tacoma, City of Tacoma, Pierce County, um Port of Tacoma and, you know, Pierce Transit. All the other partners of this group were were there and were asking good questions and she responded and and um and, you know, it was great. And then all the other CEOs talked about their organizations and it was great to see how much partnership and alignment was going on. So that was good. Um, I'm, we had the WASDA Annual Conference, which I'm sure others will talk about, but really was fabulous to go and listen to some really deep uh conversations with colleagues from across the state. It was our state conference, we had some national leaders um presenting, but we also had a lot of of folks. And we had a lot of Tacoma Public Schools showed up uh for a lot of the small uh for workshops and and um were very well attended, lots of great compliments to our TPS staff that were were presenting. So thanks to them. Um, the other, the community groups that that I participate in met a couple of times. And one of them was a Project Child Success, which is a project of first five fundamentals and it's, it deals with early learning issues and um trying to build policies and support families. And there's just so much going on from diaper drives uh to um, you know, preparing folks for getting the child child immunizations on the regularly um immunized, that kids are, as you know, are their dri- immunizations are dropping because people aren't going to the doctor and so actually kids are getting behind. And so what they're doing about that and it's just, it's a great um project and so I appreciated that. Um, Graduate Tacoma had two events. One was for um all their all-can network, which is the Community Action Networks, which is divided sub- by subject matter. And that was a great day where we uh spent time um having small group work and um presentations. And and again, really appreciate our partners at um Foundation for Tacoma Children and Graduate Tacoma. Um, and then Graduate Tacoma had an annual advocacy breakfast where um which was just the other day, which was fabulous. It's just sort of talk about policy and where we all were and what we needed to focus on for the legislative session. And then um, and then we had a meeting with the Pierce County, all the Pierce County School Districts with our legislators, the state legislators. And so I'll let Director Keating talk about that, but that was also very informative and really proud again of how Tacoma Public Schools showed up and um is a leader and um, you know, that. Well, just, I'll leave it at that.
Director Keating?
Um, yeah, well, I don't know that I um would build too much on um what Vice President Bonbright said about the meeting with the legislatures and the school districts. I think that um what I will add to that is um it was really a, an opportunity for our legislators to hear from um the districts in our, in Pierce County specific to what our concerns are and our needs are. And um yeah, going into the legislative session, um which, you know, they're, the state is facing. Um, I don't know, I heard several numbers, but I I I think that it's, I heard four billion dollar shortfall, but it might be a little bit less than that. I know that those numbers are a little um fluid and coming in. So um, so and my, I believe that that was the um, one of the first of its kind to have a meeting quite like that, is it not? No?
Um, we, we had one last year. I think we've had them pretty consistently.
Okay.
It was the first one virtually though.
Okay, well, let's give super credit kudos to doing it virtually, because that, that takes a lot of uh organization and talent. So um Superintendent, did you want to add anything to that? I saw you pop up. No. Okay. You did it. The format was different and I thought it was really effective. But um, no, we, we, we've tried, we've attempted to do it before. Awesome. Um, and so I guess um I uh attended many of the things that um Vice President Bonbright mentioned as well. Um, what I think I would probably want to report out, um, more recently, um, I did attend uh the safe, uh, the district traffic and safety meeting, uh which I'm on that committee. And I just started attending their meetings. Um, so I've attended two since the shutdown. And um, so there, there's, I think what I'm just learning about the partnerships with that committee is there's partnerships with the Health Department, the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, the City of Tacoma, um, and so uh TPD and it's just, and I'm, I know I'm missing other people, but it's a really um, it's a really impressive partnership in helping um address uh safety, um, traffic and foot safety, pedestrian safety around schools. Um, so I uh, it's, it's just an interesting committee to be a part of. And so, um, oh, one thing I will say about that, Carrie Wilhelm, who works for the city, um, she has been working on a project that I think is through a grant called Traffic Gardens, so kids can ride their bikes. And so she just wrapped up, I think it was last week, um, wrapped up a couple of programs there. She was doing this at Jason Lee and at Jason Lee approximately eleven kids um were fitted with bikes and then helped, were assisted in learning how to ride bikes and ride bikes safely. Um, and as someone who um is married to a bicycle company, I'm pretty excited about that. Um, and the People's Center, they also um also were running this at the People's Center. And there are about four, a little more than forty kids that also got to participate. So um, I don't really. So um, I don't really have any information as to um how, where, where that's going. Um, it was the first I'd heard about it and was just kind of excited and wanted to share something um fun. Um, as far as um WASDA goes, um, I mentioned the O- uh OPMA updates. Um, and today's meeting and um Director Bonbright, please correct me if I misspeak on anything. Um, so OSPI, I know we've had some questions from folks um in the community, but OSPI is not looking at grading requirements at this time um to make any, no waivers or changes of that. Um, graduation requirements um have been sent to the legislature. Um, and to help, um, cause there were um waivers in the spring due to the closure. So that, that is an ongoing conversation um and needs to be addressed by the legislature. Um, and then there was also um, a waiver um was denied um by Secretary DeVos on stan- on standardized testing. Um, and the information we were given today is that as we have an incoming, a new incoming um administration and Secretary of Education, that that, you know, that will be a continual um topic that will be addressed as we move um through the school year. Um, and then the other cool thing I did with WASDA this week, there was a, a workshop on Tuesday with um specifically to student reps. Um, and one of the things that I really liked about um a suggestion that was made was helping our student reps um when talking about, cause there's, I think, twenty-seven districts that don't have student reps at all. Um, but there was one um suggestion of having an avenue for our student reps to engage um directly through social media platforms. Um, and also it's to, for recruitment and also just engagement with other students to try and get a broader representation of student participation. I thought that was a pretty cool um suggestion. Um, and the other thing is just um preparing for the legislative session and the, um, new federal changes that are coming. And there's um high anticipation of a, um, another stimulus package um that hopefully we'll hear about um maybe by next week. So I'm su- I'm sure I talked super fast and hopefully I remembered as much as I wanted to say. So.
Thank you. Great update. Um, Director Stroger, any comments or updates tonight?
This time, no comments, no updates.
Hey, I don't have a lot to add beyond some of the um updates that Director Bonbright and Director Keating gave. Um, enjoyed participating with some other um board members in, in meetings and WASDA sessions. I actually feel like this virtual context make me feel a little bit closer to them. Often when you're in conferences and hotels and big rooms, you don't see people face to face and look in their eyes in the way that you can on, in this setting. So I actually feel like it was a different experience for me this time to engage with our colleagues face to face on Zoom. So I appreciated those opportunities. Um, I just want to open it up now to our student board members, share any thoughts from the weeks and since we've seen you last and things happening at school. Again, this is just an opportunity for you to weigh in and give your feedback, but always there's no pressure and expectation. So I'll start with Jasmine. Do you have thoughts, comments tonight?
Um, I just wanted to bring up a project that um Sammy's Feminist Club is currently working on. Uh, we're working on a campaign about marginalized voices. And so we have been drafting a Google form about questions on um if people have been interrupted um in class and haven't had their voices like um listened to and if they felt disregarded in a classroom setting. And so far, I believe we've gotten around three hundred responses just from our school. And we're hoping to open it up to um all of the TPS schools um and hopefully break down that data and um engage in teacher, uh teacher workshops to work with teachers on how to, you know, handle these um situations and like from a student perspective, what it means. Um, and see if, you know, teachers have noticed anything. Um, because oftentimes, I know that situations like this, it's hard to notice unless you're the person who's been interrupted. And so just work on ways to uh engage in conversation and, you know, uh, open conversation within our community.
Jasmine, did, did you say three hundred? Ex- three hundred responses?
Yeah, around three hundred.
Just at so, Sammy?
Yeah, we had it sent out to all teachers who have mentor groups. And um a lot of teachers had students, like they carved out a bit of time in class to have students answer it. So, yeah, it was, it was really exciting to see.
Fantastic. I mean, not that there are that many, but that, that the teachers got so involved and that there was an opportunity. Thanks for sharing that. We, I'd love updates on that, how that goes.
Yeah, and just in terms of uh more opportunities for us to work together, I don't know if you all watched our retreat. I think some of you were a part of our first conversations about annual goals or objectives. But embedded in that, we are really trying to think about doing a better job of connecting the students and, and raising, ensuring the student voice is a part of our decision-making and that we are doing a good job of seeking your input. So knowing that you all can get three hundred in responses to something is like the bar that we need to set a little bit differently for ourselves. So it's always helpful to hear the ways that you're trying to engage your school community and what you're working on. So let's keep this conversation going. And it's, I'm, I'm just going to say for the board and for you all, anytime you're all here, we're going to hear from you all if you want to speak. So I'll go to Nathan next.
Um, yeah, I, I don't really have anything to add myself, but I just want to like express how impressed I was with what Jasmine said too. That's crazy. Three hundred responses. That's a ton. Wow. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's amazing. I think it'd be great to open that up to the, the district as a whole, cause I think a lot of students would, would like to fill that out and kind of express how they feel. Um, that's a good way to kind of understand how a lot of kids feel during this whole time, when, you know, we don't exactly have every single person's opinion given to us. Um, and then also I was, earlier I was impressed with the uh, the volunteer uh presentation. I think it's, it's great that we're moving forward that way. And I like seeing um volunteer numbers go up hopefully. And hopefully after COVID, that'll uh happen. So, yeah, that was, that was interesting.
And to that point, we've always talked about how volunteerism um it, it drops down in high school. And so I would be curious to hear from you all too about what roles you think volunteers could play, like parent volunteers or like even um, um, staff of community organizations, like what kinds of opportunities you could imagine that um students would benefit from having some volunteers around. For not their teachers, but who are there to, I don't know, well, the opportunities. I won't offer what they can be doing, cause that's what we want to hear from you. Like, how do we, how do you think we should think about volunteerism? Because we see the numbers go down at that stage and we think that's a bad thing, but maybe that's the right thing. So it'd be great to hear your thoughts too. Now or down the road about whether, what role you think volunteers should play at the high school level.
Well, um, in my opinion, I, I think the way the whole Next Move project um is working, I think that's pretty, that's a good uh project in itself. So like uh volunteers helping kids uh get internships, that sort of thing. Um, and then also maybe um some more opportunities for uh counseling, especially like with college stuff. I know that they, they do a lot of that. There, there's programs like that at Wilson. There's opportunities, but I'm not sure about the other high schools. So um, you know, opportunities like that too, I think are good for volunteering.
Yeah.
Just helping kids navigate through it, cause, you know, I'm, I'm a senior this year and it's been a little tough. So, yeah, that's something to point out.
You know, that's a great reminder. I know that I used to be a, a college admission counselor. And we would get tapped sometimes, just come and do like a big, like, these are the steps you need to run through. And I know that they were probably admission counselor people type, and others who just have some more recent um familiarity with going through the process because they might have had a student or two who just did it in the years past and learned a few things. So that's a really good suggestion. Just having those extra hands on deck to help you all navigate each step in that process. Okay. Indigo, do you have thoughts you want to share tonight?
Yes, I do. Um, just to piggyback on that volunteering, I know that tutoring can be helpful for some students if they have, if that was a program that we could get started and college and career counseling. Because I know that a lot of, of, a lot of people and a lot of seniors that want to go to college, but they don't know where to start. I've had them, you know, come and ask like, how would you do such and such? And then deadlines are coming up and they're just really not aware. And like, I know with the Next Move Program or the College Bound Program, that you have access to that, but not everyone does have access to that sort of college and career mentoring. So that would be very helpful for a lot of students, I believe. And then back on to Jasmine's point about that survey, uh, I think that's really important to do, especially now. It's easy to not feel heard right now because of the situation that's going on. So I think it's really important for all the students to um feel that they can contribute their input. And um, that's just really great what you're doing.
And Caitlin?
Yeah, I have nothing to share.
Thank you. Okay, and I know Director Keating had one item on her list that I think you wanted to offer up that you forgot to say. So I want to loop back to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there's a hygiene drive um that one of the special education teachers at Jason Lee, um, Cara Liston, that they're leading. Um, her co- her class is leading a hygiene drive um to benefit the YWCA. And um, so I just thought that that was um a pretty cool project for um her class to be working on and engaged in. So um, e- especially in a time where it feels like it's hot, it feels a little bit harder to give back and be involved and volunteer. And we've talked a lot about volunteering. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to um the work that um Ms. Liston's doing over at Jason Lee.
Great. Okay, so with that, unless there are additional comments, we'll move on to item number sixteen, announcement of future board meetings. And I'm looking at the dates and recognizing that we won't be back together before all, most of the winter holidays pass and before the start of the new year. So I want to wish you all happy holidays and happy new year. Um, we'll meet again on Thursday, January fourteenth at six PM for our regular business meeting. Then on Thursday, January twenty-first, um, at six PM for a study session. And then Thursday, January twenty-eighth for our, at six PM for our regular business meeting. So with that, we will move on to item number seventeen, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone. Stay safe.
Night.